So it's six twelve, I'm going to call the meeting to order for the Wells Springs Unified Union School District. Apologize for the technical difficulties. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, first order of business is to approve the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Meredith. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. General public comment. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak? Onto consent agenda, so we have the minutes from May thirteenth, fourteenth, and warrants three ninety-nine and four oh one. If there's no questions or amendments, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by George. Any discussion?
I had a question, I think last time. Did Amanda raise a question that, one of the invoices? That we were going to follow up on?
I'm not sure, I can't remember. Oh, yeah. Yeah, she said that she was going to reach out to Louis, I don't know if she did or not.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Hey Eric, I just had a quick question about some of the invoices from the Boston trip. I don't know, I know there's no video, I wasn't sure, I'm sure Cory's there.
Okay, go ahead, what's your question?
Yeah, sure, I was just, I saw a couple invoices, and actually I had a mom that reached out and was just wondering maybe the process of like, you know, there's a lot of fundraising that goes on as far as Middletown, specifically for the sixth grade trip. And this is like a Cory conversation later, you know, in the week, that's fine too. I just thought it was, since it was school board meeting, I would inquire about just how that, how those transactions kind of go down, and if there's any accounting for how much was spent the year before, how much was spent this year, you know, what the remainder is, and I know Cory will be moving on in a couple weeks, so I was just wondering about that.
Okay, so you're talking about the student activity account?
Yes, specifically, I wasn't sure, yeah. I saw one for, I guess warrant thirteen sixty-five, there was the grade six Boston trip for one thousand eight hundred eighty dollars, and then just a few other ones, so I just didn't, she just asked a question about how the fundraising works and how the, you know, the money is handled, and I honestly didn't know, but if it's a question for Cory later on in the week and not school board, that's fine too.
Okay, well, I think you could probably get an answer to her, or if you don't know the answer now, get back.
The, um, all the seats to Ms. Rosso, so that she is, the seat that's next to her, down.
Hey Cory, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I can't hear you.
It's a step set. Yeah, Mary, Mr. Carlson works with Ms. Rosso very closely on that, to book everything, to make sure that she has all invoices, he turns in all receipts from that, so the accountability does happen in the front office with that student account.
Okay, great, I was just wondering if, you know, if the school itself pitched in anything, if it was all what was raised, you know, each year, I know there's probably a revolving amount that kind of goes into the next year. I just had a parent ask about it, so I thought I would inquire.
Yes, so everything for the Boston trip comes from the fundraising from sixth grade, and then anything that's left over this year, a decision was made to also use towards graduation, such as a graduation cake, and then leftover funds will roll over to next year's class.
Okay, great, thanks Cory.
All right, any other questions? All right, George made a motion to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Onto finance, we have the monthly reports. Yes, any questions about the reports directed to Louis? And then we have the approved tax anticipation notes. Every year we do this, and from what, hopefully I don't, this is basically to secure funds while revenue, before revenue comes in from the tax anticipation. Are there any questions about this? Was this in the, was, this is in the?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh yeah, sure. So, yeah, tax anticipation notes, Eric said is something we do on a yearly basis, it really is a tool for school boards, because once July one hits, we're in a new financial year in the school district, and we do not receive our state funds or federal funds until mid-September, usually right around there, so I think September tenth is when we anticipate that. So we have to pay bills between July one and September tenth, and what this does allows us to borrow, so we can pay our bills, pay salaries, you know, just building maintenance, building repairs, and then once we receive those funds, we then just pay this, pay this back. So it's a process we go through yearly, but it just helps us bridge that gap between July one and September for bills.
The only question I had is, I know every year the, or, I guess it really doesn't matter, but it was just kind of curiosity around like the interest rate, like.
He has it handwritten in here, four point seven seven.
Okay.
I don't recall last year's, but is that higher than last year, it seems?
Have to go back and look.
I know sometimes we make money on these things.
Okay, it was just more curiosity, to me it seemed like something that you should ask if you're borrowing, but either way, it needs to be done, so, well, we'll need to take action on this, of course, so are there any other questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and I'll move to approve the tax anticipation note. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. All right, on to superintendent's report.
Thanks Eric, just a few items to discuss in my report, so first of all, I just want to congratulate our sixth graders, I know that in Middletown they'll be graduating June twelfth, and then Wells will be June sixteenth, close to six p.m., just want to say congratulations to them and wish them the best of luck, and whoever their paths take them, so I miss them greatly, but we want to wish them the best of luck. I also would like to, as I talk about the SU, I did put PCB sampling schedule in here in my report, but just so you know, that's all PCB sampling and testing has been paused, something which was talked about, that they've basically run out of money, they said that I think less than half of Vermont schools have actually been sampled or tested, so as of right now, we are in a holding pattern, I don't know if and when we will resume that testing, but we will let you know, but, so, maybe if they can reach out to the Department of Health, they may have a better understanding, or Department of Environmental Conservation, I don't see that, but this is something which is beyond our control, the board's control, these are funds that were set forth years ago by our legislature. I do also, there's to mention an H four fifty-four, as you've been made aware of, things move pretty quickly, right now, the H four fifty-four is in the conference committee, I do believe they met today at ten a.m., I didn't get a chance to observe that meeting, I was in a meeting myself, but I know that's something which we are watching very closely to see where we are at, I know that some of the concerns around this has been with foundation formula and the impact on our taxpayers, and, you know, variety of scenarios, as well as they look at school size and, you know, other items, but I know that in the most recent proposals, class size has been taken out, but they said the foundation formula is in, and it's something we are keeping close eye on, because in, you know, projected scenarios that we've seen earlier, there are definite winners and losers in that, and I know that we've heard from various senators that there are some buffers in place to help maybe transition, you know, safeguard our community members, we're waiting to see what those are. I do, I have heard Senator Beck talk about organic growth, but that is a concern, because as we know, organic growth is inconsistent and doesn't always go equally, so in Wells and Middletown, we may not see as much organic growth as we may see in, like Rutland or Burlington or other areas, because it's largely been on industry and, you know, population and things along those lines, so, it'd be interesting to see what our conference committee can come up with, and how they go, but I think we're all looking forward to seeing what our senators or representatives can present to us, hopefully by Monday next week, I do believe a vote, and we should have a more clear understanding of where we're at, so, I know we do have some representatives here who also could shed some light on this if they'd like as well, so. And lastly, I do want to just say, just wish best luck to you, Cory Smith, this is our last meeting with her, I wish she moves on, so just want to thank you for all your work here, Middletown Springs and Wells Springs, and wish you the best of luck, so you'll be great in this, but.
Great, thank you. Did anyone have any questions or comments about the superintendent's report? Yeah, there was a lot there, and the legislative update too, and it seems to be consistently changing regularly from what's happening in the conference committee, and, so, you know, I guess my overall is, like, questioning, it's like, when, like, how long is, I don't know, like, how long the conference committee is meeting for, like, when do they plan on being done with this, is this going to drag out for weeks, or the a week, or?
I understand there is going to be a vote next Monday, but I don't think it's changed that, so.
I'm going to talk to.
Sure, yeah.
Oh yeah.
Just to cover a little closer.
Yeah.
Because the speaker's.
So the only thing I can tell you, I can give you the history of where this H four fifty-four has gone, come from, and where it is now, the conference committee will be as long as it needs to be to get a decision where everybody is in agreement. They got three, three members from the House, three members from the Senate, and it's a mix of political parties. The governor is actually listening in to all these conference committees, so if he, if he thinks it's going away that he doesn't want it, and the bill passes out, it will take it up on Monday, and he says he doesn't veto. So, it's, everybody's on edge, some people say, I've talked to Scott Beck, who's not on the education committee, but he's, he's our representative from the Senate there, and Seth Bongard is also the, he's the chair of the education committee in the Senate, he's on there, but there's, one says it's going too fast, another one says it's not going fast enough, and the longer it takes, the more they throw different things in there, that, a lot of people aren't, you know, I heard something about a safety valve for changing the way we tax small businesses, so that if we need to tax businesses more because of the property tax, and I'm not familiar with that process, but I know it's not real, it's not real happy, people are not happy about it. So, four fifty-four is kind of the crux, we got to get over that, and that's the first thing we're going to deal with Monday, also during the veto session, that's why we're coming back on sixteen, any bills that the governor vetoed, they'll be represented to both chambers, and either passed or failed, so to sustain his veto. I don't, you know, basically what happened with four fifty-four is, the House presented it, they worked it, we sat and took testimony for about three months in the Senate, and then we got presented with their bill, and we amended it, right, went back to the House as amended, they, they didn't favorably, you know, accept our amendment, but I had to go to the finance committee, because there's more involvement. Finance committee took it apart, and they basically took our bill, and just put it on the table, and they took up the House bill, the original four fifty-four, and amended that with the financial, with the foundation formula, how we're going to pay for it. So, it never came back to the Senate Education Committee, it went right to the Senate floor, and it passed, because they have the majority, so, and right now, then they agreed that it would be, it would go to the conference committee, which it's doing right now. Yesterday was the first day of the conference committee, and hopefully tonight, at about six thirty, I'm supposed to be getting a report back from Scott Beck, on what actually transpired today, so we can get some kind of an idea where we're going with this. I wish I had more information than that, but it's kind of a long odyssey, and it's hard to work with that.
Several, I've asked a question, so I know, as we look at cost drivers, you know, and healthcare is one of the major cost drivers, I think we have heard about H two sixty-six as being a, something which actually could benefit us, because it may lower that, I think it was about three percent, can you talk a little about H two sixty-six and the likelihood of the governor approving that?
Yeah, I think H two sixty-six is on its best right now, but that's, there's so many different contributing factors to the financial part of it, and I don't think anything's going to be done with healthcare.
Right, but H two sixty-six will help, we're looking at double-digit premiums again next year, and that's a, it's a big causing for all of us, it's out of control, this, from what I've read, whatever I understand, is this will help lower that, or offset that by up to three percent, I mean, so it's not going to resolve this, but it will lessen the impact, you know, it's, so.
So, it's almost like, like Nancy Pelosi said, you have to see, wait till the bill's passed to see what's in it.
Right.
It's not a good answer, but.
Well, this is just what we've been hearing, I just know, because healthcare is our main concern, if we go into the budget season, because I think that's a main cost driver for us, that we have no control over, no control, and when we heard about H two sixty-six and potential that would at least lower that percentage a little bit, that was a step in the right direction.
It's good, because it's projected to be twenty percent, there's downsides in that, so.
And that's why I asked you guys to talk a little about it, because you've been doing it.
So, this, this is, this will probably cost the Rutland Hospital about sixty million dollars, this goes, which means their services are going to change. So, I voted against the bill because of that, and it was split, it, it, it helps some hospitals in areas of the state, and some hospitals it hurts.
So that sounds like the foundation for it, I mean, some win, some lose with the foundation for it, right?
So I presented an amendment to H two sixty-six on the floor, I ended up going into the, going back to the Health and Welfare Committee, basically the Rutland Hospital and a lot of the other immediate care hospitals said, you know, we need more time to implement this, so we'll accept it as long as we can give it four months, so the amendment basically pushed it back implementation until January, it passed, even though they didn't want to do that, but, so, so there was some give and take on that, two sixty-six. There's other, there's other things too, like, the School Board Association came in with a proposal for the miscellaneous education bill, which was going to change the bargaining area, how we agree on, or how we, kind of think about, how, what, basically how they, they don't take the best last offer, so that, and we did, we did get that, so that they could do that, but a lot of it has to do with the union, too, what we're bargaining about, so. And a lot of that stuff, I'm not, never had anything to do with unions, so, it was kind of, I'm kind of learning that as I go along, but a lot of moving parts in this whole process.
It's a very, it's a very complex process, I want to thank both of you for all your work, it's, it's not an easy problem to fix.
And it changes, it changes every day, it's like, what did you just say? You know, it's kind of like, yeah.
You know, I tried to stay in touch with, I mean, I've talked a little bit, Eric and I talked to, at the, you know, that was when they, I've sent a few things, I send stuff to Julie Mack.
I appreciate all the stuff you send.
But, you know, I tried to keep up with the bill for a while, and it was just, it changed alien, and I'm like, you know what, when they get it figured out, I'll sit down and try to go through, you know, went from a hundred seventy-two pages to a hundred fifty-six pages, and now a little place, you know, I, I'm disappointed, really, because I think it was twenty weeks of ending up where we began twenty weeks ago, and I think it was a big, you know, big waste of time, so it's disappointing to me, because that was the one big issue for the education committee, and they didn't even, you know, it was four or five weeks before we even got into that, so.
I kind of, that's kind of where my head was at, was like, we had all these weeks and months of work in both education committees, and then it goes to a conference committee, and I'm like, what the hell's a conference committee, I didn't even know, so now it's going to come down to six people who are going to decide what this bill's going to say, and, so, yeah, and I guess, you know, overall, you know, one of my big concerns is that, you know, such monumental legislation, you know, for education, and there's so many different views and perspectives pulling the bill this way and that way, why does it have to be done, like, why can't this be ironed out over a couple legislative sessions, to where, to where you have something where, like, people can agree on that, you know, because I hate that, that term, there's going to be winners and losers, you know, to me, it's like, if, you know.
The ones who lose are the taxpayers, unfortunately.
Yeah, but.
And, you know, this is all about education quality, it's all about the kids, it really is, and what we're trying to do with this is, to make it so that there's enough money at the bottom end, so that, you know, this thirteen thousand thirty-three dollars, I think is the last figure I've heard for per pupil, lower spending unit districts are going to be okay with it, but, you know, and then you've got the, some of the, like Chittenden County, it has the majority of the population from students, is, and they've got the, you know, that's where I heard somebody mention, small by necessity, class sizes, we try to take that out of it. If a school is small by necessity, they, they're still a school, school houses aren't going to change. I heard, I got emails and feedback about, you know, consolidating and closing schools, that's not going to be up to us, that's going to be really up to the districts, and it's going to be done by necessity, you know, if, you know, if you look at the curve, the student population is continuing to decline, and we're trying to, you know, we've got to get out in front of it somehow, with this process, and it may end up being extended to twenty thirty, but that's, right now, our plan, call for it to be finalized and implemented by twenty, by twenty twenty-one.
Terry, I just answered a question, so I know you talked about, you know, how, will you benefit through the thirteen thousand or whatever they book them, I mean, I know it's just a number, so we're not quoting you on that, but, one of the concerns we have with this foundation formula, it's twofold, is, correct, from a superintendent's perspective, as we've been traditionally very, we've been fiscally responsible, we've been low-spending at Wells, Corey Valley, and, you know, across the SU, what happens, yes, we will see more money, but what we've seen, and what the concern has been, is, we look at the Wells taxpayers, we're looking at twelve percent homestead property tax increase, so while the district is getting more money, we're asking our residents to, you know, pay a significant increase, and with the foundation form in place, the taxpayers no longer can vote a budget down, I mean, that's just something they have to accept, I know that, so it's like IRA, who, you know, is non-operational, but there's, it was projected to go up like thirty-seven percent, this has been mid-May, obviously things will change as we look at redistricting and all these other things, but that's been the concern with the foundation form in place, while, yes, you know, the S, our GRC SU, and our Wells and Corey Valley would benefit financially as a district, because we get more money, but our taxpayers would then bear the cost, while you look at, say, a hardware union, where they would actually lose money, and, but their taxpayers, homestead property, would decrease just a bit, so, so I think that's just something where I think, part of, what we're all trying to figure out is, how do we offset that, and what does that look like, because our taxpayers, while it sounds great to them, they can't endure a twelve percent, especially when the governor said, this is about improving the quality of education for all kids, and lowering tax rates, when this, you know, initially, may not do that, and that's where I think, you know, Senator Beck was like, the organic growth, which, you know, that is long-term economic development, you know, free development, but, since small rural communities, I grew up in central Illinois, I can tell you about organic growth in some of these small, you know, farm towns, there are a lot of shuttered homes and businesses there, so the organic growth's not happening there, but it's up in the, for the urban areas, the suburbs, so, that's just where our concern is, just, whatever it shifts to, we just want to make sure that there, that our community members are not being sold this bill of goods, or say, oh, just wait, just wait, just wait, and it never comes.
Well, the community, you know, until the district boundaries are established, nobody's going to know, we tried to get that dragged out, so we could actually look at districts, and how much your taxes are going to be affected by, until those boundaries, because the districts are drawn, you can't do that, because you don't know which district, you know, the physical plants, the schoolhouses aren't going to change, where they are where they are, and the students, the population are where they are too, so, I wanted to do the district lines first, and then have something to work against, I got bored now, so.
And, and just, you know, also, in our SU, we have actually seen an uptick in students, our student population is actually increasing, so it's not turning downwards, it's actually, you see more students move into our SU, not a lot, but it is, you know, you know, it's not the other way around, so, I just want to put that out there, because I mean, just, so.
So, so I can't, I hate to say, I don't know, but I really don't know.
Well, I, I weren't expecting.
I mean, you've been following as much as I have, I didn't, I do this, I do it my spare time, because I want to know what's going on.
What I say right now, an hour from now, might be changing, right, that's just the reality of it, so I think that's, but I think, hopefully, you know, I think the two of you and the legislature understand, is, it does cause a lot of unrest within our communities, it's very diff, we went through a hiring process where there are a lot of, it's very different to staff our buildings, because who's going to be open, who's not going to be open, what does this look like, who's going to be around, and we now know that whatever this looks like in twenty twenty-eight, or not, whatever it may be, whether they settle on, that will really be up to the new district to, or the, to then make those decisions around which schools will be closed, that's what I'm starting to hear now more and more, like I said, saw the House proposal, you know, was more in line with governor's proposal, you know, July one, twenty twenty-eight, we're shifting, we're all in on this new proposal, but at that time, that's when big decisions still have to be made.
There's going to be exceptions to everything, it's going to have to be, because this is not a perfect process.
But if, but if the only cost is going to be foundation for, that's just what we look at it, you know, because there still will be a lot of small schools still in existence till I won twenty twenty-eight, so that's, and I'm not saying that's a, you know, a good or bad thing, but that was one of the things that Secretary Saunders, Governor Scott was saying earlier on, you know, small school is a problem, small school is a problem, school board's a problem, this problem, and right now, it seems it's much more complex.
So, I wish that I could, you know, if I get the report back from Scott Beck tonight, he's been, he's had his fingertips on this thing for a while, so, I could give you, well, as soon as I get the information, I'll please.
Well, one of the things I'm interested in, is how does the board feel, where do you, where do you feel you are, and, 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 I mean, where, where, what are your concerns as it relates to?
Yeah.
I mean, that's really, to me, that's the more, that's the more important.
I mean, as a board, we, the last time we had the conversation really was at the beginning with, like, four fifty-four, and, but, you know, and that's why we, we kind of joined on with the Rural School Community Alliance, because I think that advocacy aligns with, with the district and the board's perspective, and, so, again, like, you know, things have changed, but, you know, my standpoint, you know, early on with the legislation, you know, is, it's the legislation, you know, it has. my standpoint, you know, early on with the legislation, you know, is, is the legislation, you know, it had a lot of stuff in there that was, in my opinion, designed to eliminate small schools, you know, not right away, but, and then it would be, you know, the responsibility of the newly formed districts. And so it might be, you know, a couple of years, few years, but when you look at the, the minimum class sizes and, and the minimum school sizes that were originally in there. So I know a lot of that's changed and stuff, but, yeah, and, and, uh, and so that's why we just keep watching and monitoring it. And I don't know how anyone else feels about, you know, the, the legislation and, and, uh, you know, what's, what's the, uh, I guess, the significant issues.
The loss of local control. Um, our, our communities that we promised were going to be part of any school closures are being completely shut out of this. There, there will be no town vote to decide that the schools should be closed.
There was amendment on the House floor, Olson, Representative Olson had put an amendment forward to get that language in there that it would, would be by a vote.
Right. Yeah, but it's not happening. And, and I feel that coupled with what Chris is talking about, what the foundation formula is potentially going to cost communities and raise taxes. And then you're going to close these communities, small communities, schools. Who's, who's going to move to? Yes, I understand that. But what I'm saying is that people are not going to be interested in moving to a community where the students have to be bused an hour and a half.
I'm not going to vote for anything that's going to do that.
And, and I don't understand the rush of getting this done. Uh, I don't like the threats that the governor is handing out, saying this has to happen now. I think it's way too complex to try to solve it all in one piece.
And I, and I'll tell you, there are six hundred thirty-four thousand families out there. And I, I've got six hundred and fifty-four of them waiting with the answer down in the middle. So there's, there's nowhere or lose there. It's, it's going to be whatever it ends up, if we don't fix it, it's going to just kick the can down the road. And we've been doing that for years. Every, every January after an election, one, I know one representative from Rutland who was on the House Education Committee, they always, Rutland Hill, I always ask them, what are you going to do? We're going to see if we can fix the education system so we don't kick the can down the road, every two years. So, you know, I think if, look at it in a positive light, that somebody has a vision for education. And we're, we have a plan now to support that vision. It's trying to get all the, everybody on board, this plan, it's not going to happen. Somebody's going to be unhappy. So, and, and like I said, we, we've taken money out of the general fund in a year that we don't have the money. Cause the federal, thirty-six percent of Vermont's budget comes from the federal government. We haven't got anything yet. So, you know, a lot of that money is, we've always counted on that money. Well, maybe we're not going to have it. So we're going to have to figure a way to educate our children without the federal government's support. And that, and the bad thing is, that's your money too.
Oh, yeah. You send it in.
It is.
They take it.
So.
Another reason that this isn't the year to try to solve this in one. That's, it's.
Well, I, I, you know, in fairness to the governor, I, I don't, I don't think he's ever indicated that he, he's, wants to solve this in the year. I think what he wants to do is he wants to solve the funding and make it equitable for everybody and get it in place in, in a manner that you know it before you vote on budgets. I think, I think really what his goal was, um, and, and that's the way I took it when, when he spoke. Um, you know, he made it clear, we, we, we took a lot of money this year to offset this property tax thing.
Which I don't think they should have done.
No.
It was a wrong, wrong year to do that too.
Yeah, and, but, but, I mean, he.
Oh, no, I felt it at the time.
Yeah.
Totally.
Yeah. Uh, so, but, but I think, I, I think he, I mean, his intention was that that is, that's the last time it's going to happen and I want that part of it solved.
It set us up for a big fall for next year. And, and our communities won't even be voting on these budgets in two or three years. We won't have that opportunity.
The only thing you'll be voting on, because I asked the question specifically, is any additional spending this year? Right? We will be able to, but that's it. And the thing is, you won't even know where you're going to vote.
Right.
Until they have the district lines established. So.
I think it's going to ruin our communities. It's going to gut our communities.
The community schools aspect of that, I should have named it, the small by necessity. You know, I talked to somebody last night, I said, you know, the worst comes to worst if we don't get the population of students. We're all going to be going back to one room schoolhouse. And that can't, that's not the worst thing that can happen. But it, because it all, it was effective when it was effective, but now here we are, we're kind of adding impacts. And I don't, I'm only, I only have one vote. And, and they didn't listen to me because I, I, I wanted to come up with a plan that, that started with transition to boundaries. And I got, I got bored now. So I just sat and listened to four months of testimony.
Well, I, I agree with Meredith. It's, it's taking away local control and putting it further away. And our schools might still exist, but the decisions will be made in Bennington. They won't be made here. And we're attacking the problem. The funding formula was magic. Okay? And every attempt so far to fix that has made it more complicated. And I agree, that needs to be looked at. But as far as healthcare goes, you're not attacking it. You, the, all these, all these proposals.
Healthcare is a bigger problem than education.
It is. And that should be the priority.
My point. All these things have a cap on. You've got your foundation formula. Now you can grow this much in a year. Healthcare comes in at eighteen percent. We're laying off teachers, canceling classes. Okay? You're not looking at that. You're not finding ways to attack that. And as far as the union goes, I agree. We need a better solution here. We need a partnership with unions to bring them on board. And when they ask for a raise, like, okay, here's, they already can see the books, but you're part of this problem. And I don't know how to do that. But that's, we should be looking at that, fixing the formula, doing something about healthcare, guys. It's got to happen.
It's the single biggest issue, I think.
We're going to end up with no schools and no hospitals.
No insurance.
And it's not, yeah, it's not just from a school's issue.
It's, it, yeah, I, I, I hear you.
So that's all I can say is I agree with it. And, but again, everyone has one vote.
No, I appreciate the job you guys do. Absolutely.
And I, and we do.
And thank you for coming here.
Uh, uh, school board meetings in the last three years. I've been on the education committee for three years. And I asked to be put back on it because I knew that this was going to be a tough sell and it was going to be a tough job to come up with a plan. And then I, I didn't get my input.
So I, I think we're happy you're on it and, and appreciate your time.
Yep. I think, uh, Mary, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, um, for coming. Um, if I knew you guys would be there, I would have tried to make it in person, but I was just wondering, Senator Williams, I've watched a lot of the Senate Education Committee, um, meetings. I talked to Eric about it. Not so much as of recently, but when you talk about, um, classroom minimums versus school, um, that would be small by necessity, I just wonder who would, who would win out in that case?
Say that again, who won?
I know.
Well, I mean, the school is, you know, if it's a non-operating district, uh, and they don't have a high school, that's small by necessity. They're still, we have to be part of the emplacements. Uh, you know, I know a lot of these, your children go to, have the option of going to, uh, Granville, right? So they changed that. You, they wanted to keep the public education in Vermont, but they, they gave it a twenty-five mile radius to prevent the state. So, so that, you can still go. I think the kids will still be able to go to Granville. It's all, should be fine, but. But if you don't have a hot, operating, you don't have a high school. And, you know, I know there's, like around Montpelier, there are eight different high schools up there. They're a thirty-mile radius. So, and then to have kids in the Northeast Kingdom, you put on a bus for an hour and a half to, to get them to school.
Three of them, three of them.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's not fair.
And I think, I, I mean, and again, I, you know, I, I have not been making, following this, you know, I deal with stuff in my committee, uh, but, you know, I, I, from, from the conversations that I've had with folks, um, we should think, I think what they're really trying to focus is they're trying to focus on the CTEs and building building blocks from the, you know, the, the ninth through twelfth grade where everybody gets plenty of resources and they, and that's not the case in a lot of areas. I, I, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't see it focused on, on the primary schools. Um, you know, I may be wrong, but I think really what they're, you know, what they're trying to do is, is, is downsize and, and unify. You know, and those districts are going to, there's going to be longer bus rides for those kids. But I think what they're trying to do is, you know, some of these areas have great CTE programs for kids and some of them have very little, if any. And I think what they're trying to do is figure out how to form these districts where they can combine all those things. So everybody across the board gets them. I, I, you know, I don't have a, my fear really isn't the primary schools right now. Maybe, maybe you feel differently about that, but I, I think, you know, I think if consolidation is going to recur, you know, you got, you got Montpelier High School and, you know, a half a mile down the road, you got U thirty-two and a little further down the road, you know, I, I think something's going to happen there. But I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure.
Yeah, but where are our kids going to go? Between you, you have Polley High School all the way down to Arlington and Bennington. Where are our kids going?
Well.
They're going to Long Trail, they're going to BVA. Okay. How are you going to support that? Just get rid of it?
No, no, they're, they're going to stay. Beren Burton's going to stay.
Beren Burton might stay.
Approved, so is Longford. The approved infant schools that are in, not right now are going to stay. The, the best case scenario is that.
But is choice going to stay?
Yes.
Just high school choice, not middle school?
Correct.
So what?
The way it is right now.
So we have kids that go to middle school because we're seven through twelve choice?
Yeah, I mean.
So what are we, will there be a car van?
Go to Cochee for school. You know, we get, some kids are going to Spain. That's not going to happen.
Well, fine. That's the, the, the exception. It's not the majority of the students. Are they going to build a new school?
Well, eventually, yeah. That, that's the plan. Cause, and I told the.
That's going to save money?
Education that hopefully, I, I haven't seen anybody write this down, but at some point, we've got to start putting money away someplace for school construction. Because eventually we're going to have to build some schools. These schools are in rough shape. You know, some of them been built on not very well. Now you got contamination or whatever in it. And, and they did lay it down. So part of the funding that they're going to be saving, like, uh, one of the, one of the options that was put out in this conference committee was that a school that got fifteen thousand thirty-three dollars per student, if they opted not to take that whole amount of money, if they opted to take eighty percent of it, they could use the balance to help keep their tax rate down.
But doesn't that create further inequities?
That's right.
Doesn't that create further inequities?
Well, you guys have been dealing.
You talk about equitable, but that creates further.
Inequalities now, and you're doing.
I understand, but I mean.
You're the only spending district.
I work in a foundation forum in, in Illinois and New Jersey. And so I, I understand this, but, but, so on a dollar amount, yes, every single student gets the same amount. There's equity there. But when you look at, you talked earlier about, you know, communities can vote to go, go a little bit higher.
Now do it, she's seven percent.
Right, but you have the ten percent. That still is a big jump, you know, in a large district up north that has more affluent population. They could spend ten percent. That gap widens. When we may sit there and say, oh, you know, we have to lower, you know, tax rate because they'll go to eighty percent spending because they can't be hit with twelve percent. And so we're now looking at how we, you know, lower that tax rate. That gap just keeps on widening. So how is that creating equity? You talk about equitable, equitable funding for education. That's why it's not as simple as everybody's just making it up to be. It's a very complex thing that is going to take some time to work through and, you know, whatever scenario. But I think my concern is someone, like I said, this, you know, thirty-two years of education, three different states, I've seen all this stuff before. I think sometimes people are just minimizing, how's it all going to work? What about capital debt? Has there been discussion about capital debt in terms of as you form these new districts? What, what occurs with it? You know, take on this new debt and then, but there's been no real discussion about this. If you talk about building new buildings, there's just a lot of cost. So I, and my concern is somewhere down the road, there, there will be some individuals who benefit, but other communities will be sitting there with ruins. And I can, I can tell you, go back to the Midwest and I could see farm towns that have shuttered buildings, you know, closed down because the same thing was told to them twenty years ago and like, it doesn't work. And I, I'm all for exactly what Governor Scott came up and said. And I said, this is not about self-preservation. I would, I'd give up my job, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's never been about me. But if we're really going to do something that's going to increase opportunities for our kids, you know, at the high school setting and lower property tax, let's do it. But I have not seen a plan in place yet that is going to do that. And I would take any superintendent education reader I ask.
I haven't seen any.
That's our concern now. That's been our concern. And, and so we're going to move down this road and then we're going to be saying to my guy forty-six, just scratch your head, like, five years from now, where we're going to go? We haven't closed any schools, you know, we haven't done any sort of consolidation. This is going to be up to districts. And what happens if a district decides we're going to keep these five high schools open because our tax rate is not going to be for it? Then, then what, then what did we do? We just took away local control. That was the only big move we took away. We established a foundation formula, create these large districts. And that's, and I, I, my frustration is not with the two of you. So, but my frustration is just hearing these same things kind of being ru, run out over and over. It's like, but it's, it doesn't, you know, wash out.
If I had my way, you'd have gone on the, on that conference committee. I said, the superintendents.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's part of the problem.
The superintendents know where the boundary line should be drawn based on what works and what doesn't. And to not include you and teachers and community members.
And then they're running these systems, which are not businesses. They are, they are education services. And, and it is not, it is not, I'm sorry, as simple as running a business. It is much more complex. And I think they have a much broader understanding of what's going on.
I agree.
It was really frustrating to hear that they narrowed that committee down like that.
Well, thank you both for, for joining in and.
Getting yelled at.
Providing some additional, some.
We want the same thing, dude.
Yeah.
We really do. And, and we only have, again, we only have one vote.
Yeah.
But, you know, this whole thing just basically got pulled off from underneath the committees and ended up uh, in, in the finance committee. And the finance committee and the appropriation committee and the ways and means, they're, they're the ones that make the difference. Cause they got, they got the first step. And it's the House. The House has power of the first. So. And I don't claim to be an expert on any of how that works, so.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
So I'm going to hang around in case anybody has any other questions I can answer.
Okay.
No, thanks.
But thank you both. Greatly appreciated.
Certainly. Reach out to, I mean, you have my name down, so.
Oh, yeah.
And Julie does. You know, I, I want to help you any way I can and, and, uh, I'm there to be directed by the pounds I represent. And that's what I try to do. That's what I try to do. If somebody reaches out to me and, and has a concern with something, a lot of other folks do, and, and they focus on the same thing, then that's, that's the direction I go. You know, I just feel that that's the reason I'm up there and that's how I should be doing it. So.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, I appreciate it.
And you know, I'll keep sending you that stuff that I get from the speaker. You know, I don't, some of that stuff I don't know if you get, Eric. You could share it with the rest of the list.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
You know, I mean, everything that I get, as far as I'm concerned, is, is public. You know, if I get it on my legislative iPad, as far as I'm concerned, everybody's entitled to see it. So.
Yep.
You know, some of that, some, you may get some things that I get, but I'm sure you don't get things from the Speaker in the House and, and that stuff. So I, you know, I'll, I'll pass those on because they're pertinent to, you know, to what you're, you have to deal with.
Oh, yeah. And, and it's helpful because it kind of outlines what could be happening and what's coming up. So. But yes, uh, no, thank you both for all your work and for coming. I greatly appreciate it. Okay, um, all right. Uh, so we'll move on to principal reports. Let's see, um, let's see, Wells Village School first.
I try to language go over there.
Okay.
Um, just a couple of things that weren't really in my report is. Um, just a couple of things that weren't really in my report is, at this moment, we have one unfilled position to move into next year, and it is our school nurse position. It got reposted, so that affects Middletown as well. The update on our PA system, I've been in constant contact with Greg and Milt. And right now, it's in the hands of the telecom company, E and M, or E and A. They have to do something so that it's going to work through the speakers that are in place here. But still, they can't, they haven't been able to get it figured out yet. So we're still in contact with them. Yesterday was supposed to be our lake day. It ended up being a lakeless day because it was bad weather. So we stayed here and, and the kids had a wonderful time. They were really great about adjusting to the fact that we weren't gonna go. We played indoor games and had a bunch of stations set up. I know all of you know, we do the pie booth at the MWA carnival. And thank you to Lisa Madison. We had a pie making day on Monday, and the kids were able to come through and help prepare pies. We made sixty-seven pies. So there, we've got a good jumpstart on the one fifty that we would like to do. Sixth grade went on their, excuse me, their, their class trip. On Monday, we'll be celebrating them with a special luncheon. And they chose the menu. Tomorrow, our third through six is going to Hildene on a field trip. So our K to two is staying here, and they're gonna do a make your own lunch day. They're gonna work with our, with Allison Dunlap in our cafeteria to do that. As it's the last board meeting, I just wanted to thank Lisa, Chris, Cory, as well as the Wells staff, just for the support this year. We do have three people retiring, so recognizing Mary Ellen Jacobs as our nurse, Rochelle Temple is our certified OT aide, and Joy Ray, they're all retiring this year. We'll be celebrating them. And of course, Cory, very bittersweet. I'm glad she's going, hoping she's gonna rescind that, but. It's been, it's been a pleasure. I think even today, we were sitting, talking about and planning out our next book for the, for the competition that we're gonna do. So we're gonna have our kids vote on it tomorrow. And I'm just super appreciative of everything that she's done. So, thanks.
Right. I know. Um, let's see. I, I think one of the big things that I wanna highlight from our students is, um, they've been working very closely with Hillary Lambert on revitalizing the gardens at Middletown Springs. I think years ago, there was a very vibrant, I don't know if it was vegetable flower, both garden that was used, maintained by the community. And had become overgrown over the past few years. Hillary had acquired some grants for many of the GRCSU schools. I think Middletown took on the biggest project. We have ten large, and by large, I mean large, raised garden beds and four small gardens that the students have just completely, you know, taken over the garden space. And you should go check it out. I wish I had pictures of the fore and after to show you. Um, and then, uh, our fifth and sixth graders worked with Mr. Carlson throughout the year on a genius hour project. And so some of our students had, as part of their genius hour, designed a pollinator garden, which is also being installed as part of this whole, um, garden project. It, students in second grade and five, six have partnered with Hillary. However, other grades have seen this happen and have asked to be part of it. Today during recess, we had students that asked if they could give up their recess to go help Hillary move dirt. Um, so, you know, it's, it's been great. Um, they don't wanna go inside. Uh, they would like to go outside and, and continue working in dirt, which has been wonderful.
Soil.
And soil, and soil.
Dirt is on your knees.
It's moved, it's a lot of what it is, so we're specific. Um, let's see, I, I have a lot of updates regarding the physical plant. I'm not gonna go over them. And as the week has gone on since report, uh, since submitting my board report, we have received more estimates on, on, on projects that we've been waiting on. So that would certainly be something that the facilities committee would wanna start looking at. However, I will say that the, um, the issue with the flooding in the mold in the one stairwell in the new addition of the building, um, GW Savage had come, they had taken a look at it, they gave us a quote, everything was submitted to FSBA and approved. And so we are scheduled to have GW Savage come in for remediation. I believe the date is set for the nineteenth, so that students and staff are out of the building. We had just decided, while GW Savage had told us it would be safe to do it with students in the building, we didn't wanna take any chances. And just the noise, uh, we were afraid it would disrupt learning. Um, let's see.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay. Um, and then just a few other exciting things that we've had happen. We purchased some new pieces for our playground. We've installed a magnetic wall on both the larger side of the playground, as well as the pre-K side of the playground. If you've ever been to Wonderfeet, they have something similar, and then they have, um, these pipes and balls for this magnetic ball run. Um, so the kids have really been loving that. Um, our pre-K students picked up some chalkboards that will be mounted to the walls, um, in their fence areas, so they can have those. And then, um, our students are often like trying to drop drag logs out of the woods and things like that. So we purchased them some like really giant Lincoln Logs to, um, start building with. Unfortunately, those won't be here before the end of the school year. Um, we did have our lake day last Thursday, and we had, I don't know if you could call it sun, it was really hazy and smoky, but we had, um, perfect temperatures. The kids were able to get in water, so it was great. I'd like to just extend a huge thank you to the FFB for providing pizza for lunch and to all of our families. We had so much food donated. We had parents that showed up to help supervise. And, uh, Lake Day would not be successful without our staff and their families all pitching in. Um, and then for our retirements, Carol already mentioned, Mary Ellen. And then I would like to extend a huge happy retirement to Susan Rosso, um, on, on her retirement as that comes near the end of the month.
I'll remind everybody that Joy Ray also was a teacher at Middletown.
She was, yes.
For a very long time.
Yes, she is still in some of the pictures that are around the building.
I'm sure.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Great. And any questions for other principal? All right. Uh, thank you both. And, um, also, great, great. Thank you Cory for, for your time here and your hard work and dedication to all the students, so. All right, we'll move on to old business. Board retreat, we kind of just postponed this a month. So, um, bring it back to conversation. Do we need to kick the can down the road again, or, you know? It's, it's interesting, you know, again, how things have changed since last month. And so now it's, I don't know, I kind of feel like we're still in the same situation, not knowing what's gonna happen and, but I think that was the, the issue last month was. Thoughts, questions? Well, we could always plan, I don't know. We could always plan for something in August, maybe. And then. Could always cancel too.
Could it be a brainstorming event of, of, based on what transpires over the next?
Yeah.
Month or so in, in the legislature?
It could be anything the board wants. I mean, we could, we could literally, you know, depending how things happen in the legislature, I mean, we can, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be centered around goals. It could just be like, that's the whole point of a, of a retreat, I guess, is that, you know, we could do goal planning session, or we could identify priorities. Like, it's really kind of whatever the board wants.
Could, could we maybe next month just have a review of the goals we have now? And then maybe take a look at them and see if they're adaptable to what's going on in Montpelier? Do we need new ones? Should some be dropped? Just maybe a quick review along those lines?
We could do that.
As an agenda item. And then I think after that review, we'll know whether we need a retreat.
All right. Uh, how do people feel about that? Any objection?
I'd like it. Oh, yeah, I'd support that. I don't, I don't believe we had a retreat last year, if I can remember correctly, so. I'd support one this year, or even the, the talking of one next school board meeting to figure that out, but that's my idea.
Yeah, um. Trying to think. Okay, and, um, so basically, I guess, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to picture how this would work if we're gonna do like a goal review. And then from there, decide if we're gonna have a retreat or do a goal review and decide our next steps in August, or? Because.
We'll have a better idea, I think, maybe in July.
Yeah.
And that'll be a week after the Greater Relent County Retreat. I'm not sure what's happening there, but maybe something will come to light. As far as what are we gonna do with what's going on up north?
Yeah, true.
You know, it, it might be.
True, I mean.
Might give us some clues.
Yeah, I mean, you know, uh, I think, uh, I mean, can the governor keep them in session for?
I read somewhere that he's gonna keep calling you back. He's gonna keep calling you back before he gets something. So. Until there's something in place, he's not very honest.
Okay. Okay, so I'm fine with that.
I'm not optimistic that, that one day it's, it's.
Yeah. All right. Um, I think that's a good start. Um, you know, we'll just take a look and, you know, we can, we can do this, you know, as a board and just kind of identify where, where, where we wanna put our focus on the, on our current goals and if they're still relevant. And still decide, because, you know, typically, we, we do a, a retreat or goal work in the summertime. But essentially, that could be done anytime. Like, we can do it anytime throughout the year, but it's just generally done in the summer.
We, we're gonna do quarterly reviews of goals for one, one year. I, I don't remember when.
Yeah, um, well, I, it's usually.
That seemed, that seemed to be too much.
Yeah, it's usually every six months. So like last year, we did it in the summertime. We did our review in the summertime. And then, um, usually try and aim for like January, February, six months. But this year was postponed just because of all the other agenda items that we had. Uh, and I think we did it last month or the month before, so, uh, but that's fine. I mean, it's been a while. And, uh, it doesn't hurt to revisit, um, you know, especially things change. Um, so. Okay.
And maybe just make sure before, in the packet or the goals, I turn it, should we put some thought to it ahead of the meeting?
Yes, yes. And, and I went through the, um, the rubric that we have or the, the goal worksheet that we have. I updated that from our last meeting to have, you know, updated, uh, progress, basically. Uh, okay, uh, any other discussion on the retreat? All right, uh, so we'll move on to new business. So, uh, this is carrying over from last month on the resolution, so, uh, there is a resolution in the packet. And, uh, again, this was something that was kind of done collaboratively through the, through members that are part of the Rural School Community Alliance. And, uh, and I did confirm, I think it was last week, that this was the same resolution that, um, others have submitted to the VSBA and/or were going to submit. So, uh, and so I guess we'll, we could talk about the resolution first and then the other piece after. Did anyone have any questions or concerns about the, the resolution?
Do we wanna make a motion to submit this resolution?
Yes, that would be the next step if no one has any questions.
We can discuss it after that, too.
Oh, yes, of course.
So I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Meredith made a motion to approve the resolution, um, as presented. Uh, any discussion? Questions, concerns? And the deadline is the sixteenth, so, um. Okay, uh, if there's no discussion, then, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Quiet motion carries unanimously on the resolution. So, okay, so the other piece of this, uh, on the agenda says board dues. So this was, uh, there's also an open letter to the VSBA. So some, um, districts and SUs have expressed concern about the VSBA and, um, their testimony. I guess there are aspects of H454. And, um, some of them have met with the VSBA representatives. But this letter was, um, uh, this and, and, um, I guess to point out that they're not happy with the, um, with the testimony and the, the VSBA's position on H454, on certain aspects of it. So, this is, we're bringing this, uh, this is like a discussion piece because there has been a few, um, boards or, I, I can't remember off the top of my head how many S, I think there's one SU and some other member boards or school districts, I should say, that have ac- actually, uh, voted not to, be part of the VSBA and withdraw their, their dues and membership. And so I think, I, I don't know, did I leave anything else, Meredith?
No, I don't think so. It's just that, being that our meetings are a month apart, this, and in light of what uh, was sent out today by the VSBA, I'm wondering if this letter is already stale.
Yeah. Yeah.
Basically, the VSBA has sent out a letter saying, uh, it's a little more than these, just these concerns, but certainly it's the action of the current, uh, or the current makeup of 454. As an organization focused on good governance, this process is not consistent with our beliefs. Changes are needed. The legislature should take time to make sure those changes are well reasoned in support of Vermont's public education system. And so now they are saying, uh, that they are not backing H454. And so now this letter kind of is. And I don't know if it's from pressure from letters, this letter being sent.
Let this keep pressure on.
And, and the other point is, do we still agree with this letter? Because it's important for this message to continue to be seen at the board, at the VSBA. So.
Yeah. Yeah, and I believe this was, I think this was the letter that was, that they were sending out, anyone who was considering it.
I wanna say it's been two weeks since, since this letter was originally written.
Yeah. Well, I think, uh, I don't know if it's changed, but, um, I know I, I saw it last week and I was like, oh, I think I asked you about, we put it in the documents for, just to add some context. So, you know, essentially, um, some of the stuff that other boards are doing within the Rural School Community Alliance.
So this wasn't intended for, for us to sign on to?
No, uh, well, I mean, it was intended to bring, uh, to the board just for discussion. I mean, I in particular, uh, just am conflicted with, um, uh, where I've, I've, I've seen and, um, listened and read some of the testimony and the standpoints and don't necessarily support it, um, from the VSBA. Uh, but then again, the VSBA, you know, does provide a ser. VSB A. But then again, the VSB A, you know, does provide a service. And, and so for me, without knowing what the the implications would be to do something like this, you know, without knowing, like, withholding, you know, basically, I guess, not being part of the member of the VSB A, what would that do? Would that affect the supervisory union? Would, you know, as far as dues go? So I don't know. But overall, you know, I, I personally use the VSB A a lot for a lot of different things, whether it be for policy stuff, and even just general board service stuff. I reach out to them often. So I think there is a service there. You know, maybe some folks don't see that value. And the big issue is around the legislative stuff, which I can see. You know, one of my biggest issues with, with this, the VSB A is that throughout this whole legislative process, this massive change to education in Vermont, I don't recall seeing anything reaching out to members. Instead, they rely on their legislative committee of, I think about a dozen people, and the full board once a month, which if you listen to some of those meetings, it's, well, I, I won't say anymore. But so, you know, the, and, and of course, the alignment with, you know, the VSA and, and the, the BPA and, you know, where's, you know, where, where's reaching out to, you know, more of the school boards, I guess. That was something that, from that, from that perspective, I find.
I mean, we're not going to hear on this resolution until the annual meeting, right?
Correct.
So one of the things, though, is in, Sue Siklowski specifically stated that they operate based on their resolutions. So without a resolution in place, she was saying that they have no there's no forced reason for them to be advocating essentially for us, at least from this standpoint of the resolution. So that's why Rural Council felt it was so important to get this in front of them, and have it voted on. And so many different communities have submitted the resolution. So that hopefully it will be
Yeah.
On the ballot, quote unquote.
Yep.
So I, I do like the resolution. I guess we just have to wait and see before taking any action like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, the letter was, I signed on to the Rural Council, saying that I would bring this to our board to discuss. Because I felt regardless of whether we sent a letter like this, or decided to defund them, it was important our board understood what's going on.
I mean, if the rest of the letter, we could send, other than the dues issue, it kind of goes with the resolution. But yeah, this, thanks for bringing that in.
And for what it's worth, the, the rural schools are, are looking for money. And they are getting money from some boards, are getting money from individuals. I'm not advocating necessarily that we would try to, to defund, and I don't even know how that would work, defund the
GSB.
The VSB A and divert some portion of that fund. But they are looking for another $10,000 to cover their lobbyists. They've already raised over $40,000 for the work that's already been done. And I'm sure, I know Eric sees the mountains of emails we get, telling us about every 10 minutes what's going on in Montpelier. So.
Yep. And, and some of it, though, too, is, you know, even just other members just, just chiming in, and, and some of it's not even relevant. So, but there's, there's a lot of emails. And, and that's why I kind of shared the, you know, the, like the op-eds and the, the media stuff, too, because I think that's important for, for folks to see. And, you know, and then I guess any potential you know, position that they're taking. But there hasn't been much going on until actually today. So it's been, yeah. So, yeah. And I think depending on how, you know, things shake out, you know, there's still, there's always time to, you know, send a message to, to the VSB A in another way, too. But, you know, again, they, the, there's other, some of those other SUs and districts, they're, they're taking their membership and donating it to the Community School Alliance. And then, then as far as like the VSB A services, they'll just buy them à la carte, basically.
Still.
You can still go to the annual meeting, you just can't vote unless you're a member, but you can still do the services, stuff like that. But, you know, which, how does it work when you're part of a supervisory union if one of your districts isn't a member?
Yeah.
There's so many things like. Yeah, I know. So. But yeah, so, you know, hopefully that kind of brings the attention of, of some of the stuff that's happening. And, and, you know, and folks are really going to make a stand. So, Mary?
Yeah, I was just wondering how much our membership was.
I think it's about nine grand, nine or 10.
And that's just, and that's just for the Wells Springs? No, that's for the whole of GRCSU?
No, I think that's our portion.
Is it really? Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
So that's a lot of money.
For, yeah, I mean, for a year. Yeah. And it's based off of, so you have, there's, there's a formula for it on the VSB A's website. But I wish I had memorized it. But so it's, I think it's part of the supervisory union, you know, a percentage of it goes to, I'm not, I, I want to say maybe it's ADM, I'm not sure. But I, I thought, like, there's a percentage of it where it's broken down. And, but I know I've seen it on the VSB A's website. But what we actually pay, I'm just kind of guessing. But I mean, we could find out. I mean, we get plenty of financial documents. We can just look back to see what, what was in the budget we passed this year. So it'll, it'll be, I think it actually is a line item. So, so if you go back in the documents for the budget, it should be under, on, on a light item in there.
Okay. And is that something that we decide upon being, you know, members as of September 1st, April 1st? I, I wasn't sure if I missed that.
July 1st.
Okay.
So it's the fiscal year. Yep. But yeah, I, I don't think, and, and that's, that's a good point, too. I don't know if, you know.
Eric, is that something that we voted on in the past about regarding being members? Or is that kind of just, you know?
That, that's what I was going to say. I think it's just status. Yeah. Unless we, I think if we say that we, you know, again, this was before I was on the board. Okay. Oh, cool. So about 3K for Wells Springs. So I was way off. $12,000 for the SU. So, thank you. Yeah, does that answer your question? But I, I think, no, we, you know, and maybe Meredith, you know, if there was something that was done at the formation of the Wells Springs Unified Union School District to be part of the
Not that I remember.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it didn't happen.
Yeah. I mean, my thought, if it was, it would have happened at the original organizational meeting. And that was before my time. But so, yeah, it's not something we have to do every year. I think it's something that, once you're a member, you're a member. And if you decide to leave, then, then you would take action. But again, another question that I don't, I'm just kind of guessing on. So. All right.
River Valley has pulled in. They paid 10, 10 grand.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on. No executive session and general public comment. So did anyone have any public comment tonight, online or in person? Okay. So our next meeting is July 9th at Middletown Springs. And did anyone have any future agenda items to add? If not now, reach out, send an email. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn at 7:33.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Meredith. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Unanimously. Thank you. Good night, everyone.